Manhattan Neighborhood Network, in partnership with the League of Women Voters of New York, the Amsterdam News, and the Gotham Gazette, is pleased to bring you a debate between the candidates running for city council in the Democratic primary on September 12th in District Number 5. The winner will be the Democratic nominee for that seat in November's general election. Hi, I'm Joyce Short. I am a longtime District 5 resident and community advocate. District 5 represents approximately 168,000 residents, and it covers the Upper East Side, Yorkville, Lenox Hill, Carnegie Hill, Roosevelt Island, Midtown East, Sutton Place, and El Barrio in East Harlem. We've asked the candidates to keep their responses to a minute. The candidates' seats were selected by lottery. Starting from my left, we have Patrick Bobelin, Gwen Goodwin, Ben Kalos. Welcome, candidates, and thank you for being here. My first question goes to Ms. Goodwin. Questions, again, the answers will be a minute and 30 seconds for rebuttal. Other than affordable housing, what is your particular area of interest? And how do you think you can impact the district regarding that issue?
I think one of my most important issues, and really why I got involved in the election, was zoning issues. I started working against these upzones in 2005, when I worked against the first one in our district. In 2008, I worked against 125th Street rezoning, because I realized an upzone is an outzone. And when we upzone, what we do is we lift up entire hunks of buildings, and we basically remove entire neighborhoods. And, you know, I've been waiting for something to happen at the city council where this did not happen, but it continues to happen. And I see that it's happening all over the Upper East Side. And actually, with the mayor's plan, the five-point upzones, we're seeing people all over this city being displaced. So even though the upzone issue does not sound like a sexy issue, it's very, very important to everyone's way of life, because once you're upzoned, you're outzoned. And usually, a rent-stabilized building that's removed does not come online again. So this is one of my most important issues. The other things that I've been working on are women's issues. And for the last year, right before my husband died in May, I worked on the Bernie Sanders campaign, because I love his platform for the middle-class and working-class people. So that's the kind of platform I have.
Good. And next, Mr. Kalos.
First, I want to thank Manhattan Neighborhood Network for hosting this debate, and all the viewers at home. Thanks for watching. And Joyce, thank you for your leadership on Roosevelt Island. I've been very focused on education. And when I ran in 2013, I was fighting for universal pre-kindergarten. I was able to fight Albany with the mayor. We won $300 million. But in 2014, we only got 154 seats. And so I began working with parents, neighborhood organizations, nonprofits, providers, and the Department of Education. We actually quadrupled the number of seats to 618. This year, they actually reduced the number of seats, so we got together with our citywide elected officials and kept fighting. Proud to say we've won two additional classes for pre-K that will bring hundreds of seats. And like Gwen, I also agree that the rezonings are a concern and overdevelopment, which is why we've been taking on the super-scrapers that have been marching from commercial neighborhoods into residential neighborhoods. And I'm proud to lead the first-of-its-kind, community-led grassroots rezoning to fight over development with affordable housing and hike caps, so that all of us can stay in our neighborhoods.
And Mr. Bobelin, you're next.
Well, as I've walked through the neighborhood, and as I was doing my petitions and out-meeting voters, the number-one issue that people still bring up to this day is the Marine Transfer Station at 91st Street. And this is a perennial issue that people are pretty resigned to. They think it's going to open, it's got to open, but it's one of the most ridiculous sites in the planet. It sits between a soccer field and a gymnasium that kids use. School buses unload there all day, every day. Meanwhile, we've got some options open to us. We've got community organizations that are offering three different options. One is a ferry service. The mayor loves his ferry, so we want to expand the ferry service. The second, we could possibly open a new marine police station there. Or even, third, a fire station. Our city council member sits on the maritime subcommittee, and I would hope that he would prioritize it and look for expanding on these three ideas, rather than leaving the neighborhood resigned to accepting that this waste transfer station, which is extremely dangerous, sits where it does now. I think we can do better.
Thank you all. Our next question: Constituent services are a main function of each council member. What will you do to effectively provide such services? And let's start with Mr. Kalos.
My job is to help people. It's one of the best parts of the job. Residents reach out all the time for assistance with affordable housing, or because they're facing eviction. And some of my best days are when we're able to get people on those lists, or able to prevent an eviction. In fact, I'm proud that the city council just passed, and I was proud to sponsor the right to counsel, which means no one will ever face an eviction without a consultation or representation by an attorney. Beyond that, we have a great team of social work, and we've done about 6,600 cases since I've been in office, which actually puts us in the top 10 list for the city council. We do mobile hours on Roosevelt Island and at senior centers throughout the neighborhood. We do First Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Come, talk to me about whatever you like. We're here to help with your problems. We also do brainstorming with Ben, second Tuesday of every month. And you don't have to come to me. I'll come to you for Ben in your building.
Ms. Goodwin.
Well, I think the first thing I would do for my constituents is I would not vote myself a raise, because I think that was outrageous, that the first thing that the representative did next to me was gave himself, or voted for a $36,000 raise for the city council after they'd already received a $25,000 raise. A lot of people say that's a great thing, because they're working a full-time job. But, you know, my husband worked for the post office 53 years. At the end of 30, sorry, for $53,000 a year. And at the end, when he retired after 36 years, he only made $53,000. We all work hard in New York City. So I think it's really outrageous when a public servant comes to you and says, "Listen, I'm giving myself another raise, and it's because I have a full-time job." It is a full-time job. And anybody who calls me knows that I have come to help them. When I wasn't working last time in this district, I came out to the Lexington House Projects, and I got their gas turned back on after it had been off for two months. So if you call me, I'll be there. And I also want to say that as far as tenants are concerned, they are still at great peril. These services that we have are not doing them much good. It's just a lot of talk, but not a lot of action to keep them where they are. Thank you.
Mr. Kalos, would you like to respond to that? You'd have 30 seconds.
Absolutely. When I ran, the city council was a part-time job, and elected officials were actually free to take millions of dollars from interests that they would be regulating. One of the things I wanted to correct, and I introduced legislation to do so, was to make outside income illegal and make the city council a full-time job. There was an independent commission, which was appointed, and recommended a raise after the council hadn't had one for about 10 years. And whereas in Albany and other parts of our government, we see elected officials taking money without getting rid of outside income, without getting rid of what the Daily News called "legal grease" or bribery, I'm proud to have gotten rid of outside income and legal bribery in the city council.
So, Mr. Bobelin, would you like to answer the constituency question?
I would, absolutely. I would say that constituents are clamoring for a clean and safe environment. They're clamoring for more pre-K seats. And whatever we're doing right now is not currently working. So I would pledge that my staff would be out on the streets every day. We would be out meeting. I would be also with them, out-meeting all of our constituents. I know through lived experience what it means to struggle with affordability issues. So the affordability crisis is not an abstract idea to me. I know what it's like to struggle paycheck to paycheck. And so I know that we need people who understand, the people who are on fixed incomes need to have their issues addressed, absolutely. And we need to be sure that we're prioritizing the interests of lower- and middle-income people over the people who are at the 1% or at the top, because they have the smallest voice, and they need the most help from us.
Let's start with Mr. Kalos. What is your position on the 91st Street Marine Transfer Station? And how will you address the community's concerns about garbage truck traffic and pollution from diesel emissions?
I grew up on 89th Street in York, across the street from the Marine Transfer Station, when it was active. In 2006, the city council voted in favor of a citywide solid waste management plan and to reactivate the Marine Transfer Station. In 2013, ever since I've been elected, I've been working with the community pledged to protect, to find ways to try to stop it. We exposed high costs of about $632 million. We also were able to get the mayor to agree to a goal of zero waste for the city by 2030, which would make the Marine Transfer to Landfill Station obsolete. And working with elected officials, pledged to protect, NYCHA residents, and our community, we're able to move the ramp one block north to keep 35,000 children safe. Beyond that, I've also been able to force the Department of Sanitation, under oath, to agree to only using 1/3 of their capacity, which would keep 300 garbage trucks off our roads. We've also introduced legislation for air quality monitoring, which has had a companion bill in Albany pass. But the mayor may want to build it, but we're going to keep trying to fight it and dump that dump.
Ms. Goodwin, could you answer that question for us?
Well, I think it's a really difficult question to answer. It is a terrible, terrible thing to have in that place. It's all residential. But I think that the easier parts to take would be to make all of, as a matter of fact, I think all of the buses and all of the trucks should be completely diesel-free in this city. That would be the first thing. I know myself, because I live across the street from the 100th Street Bus Depot, which was also closed, but reopened in 1999. And we have diesel particulate matter, you know, coming in our air 24 hours a day. So I think there have to be filter systems within the building. I also think the trucks need to be clean air buses. And I also think that we should introduce solar power to every place where we're going to use electricity in that building. The best we can do at this point, right now, other than close it down, is to get as clean as possible with the air and using electricity that's free of particulate matter.
And Mr. Bobelin.
We've got a mayor, as Mr. Kalos said, that is pledged to a zero-waste program in the future. So therefore, if the mayor is truly committed to zero waste, we won't need this dump to be where it is right now. Also, the council member has added single-stream garbage cans all around our district at an insane price. And while the future should be in recycling and should be in composting, we've got these single-stream cans that don't instruct the public that we need to be thinking about recycling, we need to be thinking about composting, we need to be thinking of alternatives. Meanwhile, we're going to keep piling up trash, and we're going to end up justifying the need for this 91st Street Transfer Station. It is one of the most dangerous sites imaginable. We need to have elected officials who have the courage to stand up and fight against it, not merely casually opposed through words, but sit down with the mayor and tell them that we demand that this not open.
Ms. Goodwin, how do you plan to alleviate overcrowding and increase the number of public school seats in the district?
Well, I'll tell you what. I've been working with this for a long time, and I could have put 1,200 seats back into the public school system if Ms. Viverito had not blocked me. I am responsible for saving PS 109 in 1999 while it was being demolished. After they got the roof torn off, I made them put the roof back on. That did cost the taxpayers $5 million, and I worked for 12 years to turn it back into a public school. Instead, the city council voted for it to be something called art space. 35 apartments for a bunch of artists, which is fine. I mean, I have nothing against artists, except for grownups can take care of themselves, and children cannot. And I think the children of East Harlem really needed to go to a beautiful school to see that there was going to be a clear way at the end of the poverty, maybe through going to a beautiful school, just the way CBJ Snyder said it would be 110 years ago. So I hold this issue is really, really important, and I think that we need to use all of our school spaces. There are empty schools around Manhattan that are being used for other things right now. They're not empty right now, but the point is that they could be used for public schools again. But I definitely think we need to keep building more public schools and make sure that they are public. I am opposed to the other schools.
Mr. Bobelin.
Like Ms. Goodwin, I am against, I think you meant to say charter schools. And I'm also against co-location. I think we need to, we are constantly hearing about budget cutbacks in our Department of Education. That's why I believe that all of the appointments that are made by the mayor to head these departments need to be elected officials. The public needs to have a say in the direction of how our trash is picked up, the direction of our schools, and the Department of Buildings, et cetera. Without that voice, the community will be subject to the desires of real estate developers. The council member just voted to rezone one of our local beloved parks, Mark's Brothers Park, to hand over to private developers, with the caveat that it would create more schools that we need. But the problem is, we shouldn't put kids' recreation on a hierarchy of needs against their education. Kids need to socialize, kids need to have fun, and they also need an education. They need to have both. So we need to have courageous city council members who are willing to fight that fight and demand that we get the space that we need, and we demand that we get the money we need to create more public schools, because the future is not in privatization and not in charter schools.
And I know you touched on it before, but perhaps you'd like to add something. Mr. Kalos.
I graduated from the Bronx High School of Science, a world-class public school, and I think every child deserves a world-class education. As I mentioned, in 2013, I ran on universal pre-K, and we won $300 million from Albany with the mayor. We've actually been doing the day-to-day work of finding commercial spaces, just as I proposed in 2013, to convert into schools. And we've used a lot of those commercial spaces to turn them into pre-K, so kids can go to school right here in the neighborhood. Also been advocating for 3K. And I'd love to see universal childcare in our city, so that parents can afford to live here and raise a family. Beyond that, I have proposed a rezoning in Sutton, which would actually add an additional floor-air ratio, so that we can build new schools as part of new development. And frankly, anytime I see new construction, we approach the developer and say, "What do we need to do in order to bring a school to your building?" And beyond that, I've also had the opportunity to invest $5 million, including $1 million right on Roosevelt Island, for green roofs. We've done it in about three or four schools, technology in all the schools, so that our children are ready for the future.
Let's start with Mr. Bobelin on this question. In 2016, more than 127,000 homeless men and women and children slept in the New York City shelter system. This includes over 45,000 children. What's your solution to the problem of homelessness and the addition of homeless shelters in our district?
My solution is that we need more courage from our legislators. We need to get real with our neighbors and say, "We need to be taking care of the neighbors that live with us and are struggling with affordability and that might be pushed out of their homes. We need to be providing space for them if we are really to be a caring society in a sanctuary city." But I would also say that current figures show you need to make about $26 an hour as a single parent to afford a two-bedroom apartment in New York. That means that we need a minimum wage that matches that and stays tethered to that, so that if we have increased housing costs, it goes up along with the minimum wage. Because right now, parents and children, single parents and children, are forced to share a bedroom or live in a studio together. You know, I did this when I was a kid. I lived with a single mother who struggled with affordability, and we shared a bedroom at one point in my life. I know what that's like, and she had no privacy, and that's no way to live as an adult. So if we're truly going to provide for our parents and provide for our children, we need to make sure that no one's working 40 hours a week and still risking homelessness.
Next, Ms. Goodwin.
I think we have a real lack of balance here. And I think that it started, actually, under Mayor Bloomberg. We saw more evictions under Mayor Bloomberg, and it's just continued under Mayor de Blasio than we have seen since the 1920s. I think what has to be done is, we need to level the playing field by, we're going to continue to use the 80/20 plan. However, the 80% is going to be for low-income and middle-income housing, and the 20% at most would be for market-rate housing. Because right now, we have displaced over 50,000 people that are homeless in New York City. And I remember when I was running for city council last time, I ran into a woman who was the manager of the department I worked at when I was working at Bendel's. And she was now homeless, living in a homeless shelter with her child. Now, what's wrong with this picture? I mean, I live right across the street from the Jenny Clark Homeless Shelters, seven homeless shelters. And many of the people are working. So there's something really wrong with this. And I think what's really wrong is we continue to buy luxury housing for people that may or may not use them. I hear of many people that just come in a couple times out of the year, and these buildings are sitting with a lot of space that could be used for permanent residence.
And Mr. Kalos.
The city has a homeless crisis, pure and simple. And as a person of faith, I've sought the counsel of rabbis and pastors about what we could do about this problem, which is why we worked together to found the East Side Task Force for Homeless Outreach and Services with our faith-based institutions and nonprofits who provide direct services here in the community for the homeless, and connecting them with resources from my office, other elected officials, and city agencies. We've been able to work together to help some homeless individuals in the community who are publicly intoxicated or spat on passersby, to get them the help they really needed, get them shelter and off the streets. If you see someone who's homeless, please call 311 or use the 311 app, and the city will provide them three square meals a day, a shelter, job training, and all medical care and treatment, and whatever they need to get off the streets.
I apologize, Joyce, but I need to rebut that, because I think the council member...
30 seconds for rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay. Let's have 30 seconds for your rebuttal.
Okay. I think the council member just conflated mental health issues with affordability issues. And people who are struggling with affordability don't necessarily have mental health issues. Those don't go hand-in-hand. These are hard-working people. These are people who work for the city a lot of times, who live out of their cars. These are people who have struggled and struggled, and maybe they do have a substance abuse issue, but nine times out of 10, they're just hard-working people who can't afford to live in this city, because there's no courage coming from our legislators to provide the kind of money they need to afford housing and to fight for truly affordable housing. The idea of affordability that comes from our legislators is just out of hand. They don't know what affordability means. They think people are making 50 grand a year, and they're just simply not.
We're going to go back to Mr. Kalos, and we'll give you 30 seconds to rebut the rebuttal.
Thank you. You asked a question about homelessness, and I was talking about specific homelessness and what we've been able to do with some of the folks in our community that have been most vulnerable for so very many years, who weren't getting the help that they needed. There is an affordability crisis as well, which is why we passed the right to counsel, so that no one will ever get evicted again without having a consultation or a chance for representation by an attorney. And in my office, where we're able to get somebody affordable housing or stop an eviction, it's one of the best days that we can have. Beyond that, I've worked with whistleblowers, who are able to help me identify that there might be hundreds of thousands of units of affordable housing, where landlords are getting money, but they may not be offering people the rent at the right rates, which is why I introduced legislation, which I hope to pass very soon with the support of the viewers, that would actually get all the affordable housing in the city online. And beyond that, I've been proud to vote in the city council to bring affordable units to my neighborhood at rates of $300 a month for rent.
Ms. Goodwin, I know you have a rebuttal for this also.
I do, because I just want to say that, first of all, I think it's a really nice idea to give $3,000 to tenants that are going to court. However, that takes you through the front door only. That's about it. I know, because I have won in housing court many times. I've been there, and it's a terrifying experience. But at the end of the day, what's really happening here is working people are being evicted by the hundreds of thousands. I remember when the change in housing court happened, under the Bloomberg administration, where we now see lines of people out the doors every single morning being evicted. What we need is, we need to have better, we need more rent-stabilized buildings, and we need to stop evicting people. Stop evicting people, and then you won't have to build any more homeless shelters, because most of the people are working people. Thank you.
Let's start with Mr. Kalos. President Trump has proposed a $7.4 billion budget cut to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The plan would eliminate up to $340 million from the New York Housing Authority budget. It would also, for the first time since 1981, force tenants to pay 5% more of their income towards rent. Given this, how would you address the issue of displacement of the elderly or those living on fixed income in public housing who would be most affected by this increase?
The federal, state, and city government have been divesting from public housing and New York City Housing Authority for a long time before Trump, which is why, even before his election, I've been leading as vice chair of the Progressive Caucus, fighting for vulnerable communities, fighting for marriage equality, fighting for reproductive health, and fighting for our public housing tenants. This mayor wants to build luxury housing on our public housing land, a plan that I opposed, a plan that Gwen has also opposed. And it's time for the city of New York to step up, which is why I've been leading a coalition to make sure that we actually fund NYCHA fully. They need $17 billion. Since I've come into office, we've been able to secure $2 billion. We've got $15 billion more to go. And when I wrote the progressive policy platform for the Progressive Caucus and resisting Trump, it's why it said that we had to fund public housing fully.
Ms. Goodwin.
Yeah, Ben is right. I've been working on infill issues for over 10 years. It's a major, major, important issue. And I did come up with a plan to put some funding in. The idea, we are still funding the New York City Police Department to the tune of $70 million a year to man the New York City housing projects, except they haven't been there for many, many years. So we're still paying them for a service we're not getting. So I think the first thing we need to do is, we need to reroute that money back into the New York City housing projects, because that will give them a boost right away. It seems like with Donald Trump being our president and the wedding planner, who's the new head of NYCHA, we are surrounding the projects and really pushing in on them with this luxury housing plan. So I would tell you that if anything gets built at the New York City housing projects, it has to be more low-income housing, because this is the need of the city. And I think it's up to people in public office to step up to the plate and tell people maybe what they don't want to hear, tell the real estate agencies what they don't want to hear. We have to build more low-income and affordable housing, because we cannot solve this homeless issue until we start providing what the needs of the people actually are.
Mr. Bobelin.
We need to have legislators who are a lot more courageous and who are willing to fight with developers, as everyone on this stage has said. But what we also need is, we need a vacancy tax, because there has been rampant development around the Upper East Side. And I know on Roosevelt Island, there's some threats to just continually build luxury developments everywhere. And we're not creating any kind of affordability. We're not zoning for density. We're getting buildings with 15, 16-foot-high ceilings, and people are buying them and watching their money grow, because Manhattan Real Estate is one of the best horses you can bet on. And so what we need is, we need to make sure that when people are developing and people are buying, they're paying not only a vacancy tax, but also an infrastructure tax, because we need to provide more money, and we need to be willing to fight the real estate interests, fight the 1%, and provide for the 99% of Americans who need help, and certainly 75% of New Yorkers who are struggling with affordability.
Let's start with Ms. Goodwin. If elected, how do you plan to attract and keep small businesses in the district?
Rent regulations. It has to happen. Its time is here. Sorry, we've been talking about it for years. We haven't done anything about it. We hear about it, and it has to happen, because businesses all over the city are being affected by the unpredictability of what the new lease is going to bring. So I think we need rent regulations for all small businesses. Not so much big businesses, by the way, like Whole Foods. I think they're pretty stable. But I think in neighborhood, I mean, preservation of neighborhood is so important to me, and we've lost so much of it. One of the most heartbreaking things I see is picking up entire hunks of a block and tearing it down, tearing down the stores, tearing down these rent-stabilized buildings, and then it's another glass tower up again. So, you know, not only are we losing affordable housing, but we're losing the character of the city. And to me, as somebody who lives in the city, I don't want to wait 10 years to have a conversation with some developer about it. It has to start right away. So we need to rein these developers in, because they are not creating housing for regular people that live here in New York City. And we need to help these small businesses, because as we walk along, I know you see them, the empty storefronts.
Mr. Bobelin, you're next.
We need rent control, absolutely, I agree. We also need progressive tax system for small businesses to make sure they're not paying at the same rate as large businesses. And we also need a public defender system. I've heard from one of our local bars that he, the owner of the bar, Ryan's Daughter, which I believe is on 85th, he bought this bar nine years ago. About 30 years ago, there was a flagpole put up on the outside. Inspectors came by, and they said he would have to, you know, add it as part of the zoning regulation or whatever. And it ended up costing him $15,000. We need a public defender system, so that our small businesses aren't out there spending a month's rent or two months' rent just to justify a flagpole that's been on the building 30 or 40 years that the neighborhood is fully comfortable with. It's things like that that drive our businesses out and make it unwelcome. We're hemorrhaging small businesses, and we need to make sure that we're friendly to them, and also low-income and immigrant-owned businesses. them, and also low-income and immigrant-owned businesses. We need to make sure that we're protecting people and we're telling people that they're welcome here, their business is welcome here, and that we're going to do everything we can to provide programs to support them.
Mr. Kalos?
I grew up in the neighborhood, and it's really hard to see some of the small businesses that I grew up with closing in the current climate. But we can do something about it, and I've had the privilege of meeting with a lot of the small businesses in our neighborhood, making sure that we connect them with small business services. But what we need to do, which is legislation that I've sponsored, is a Small Business Jobs Survival Act. It would provide businesses with a right to a 10-year lease with renewal. It would give them arbitration, and it would allow them to stay in the neighborhoods that they helped make so great. Beyond that, the thing that everyone can do, including our viewers right now, is when you have a choice between a chain or one of the local businesses, please shop local. I know I do, and we have the best food in the city, right here in my district.
Let's start with Mr. Boboland on this question. Mayor Giuliani prided himself on the concept of "one city, one fare." But the new ferry system is undermining that concept. What can city council do to assure New Yorkers that "one city, one fare" will include our new ferries?
Well, we set the fare, and we make sure that we're directing people over to the ferry system. We need to make sure that we're connecting our bus system, our transit system, up with the ferry system, so that it seems like a useful and exciting tool, and it can help alleviate a lot of the pressure that's on the MTA right now. Right now, we're losing bus service in our district. They're getting cut, because we don't have adequate bus service to supplement train service. Even though trains are getting overcrowded and they become really scary to take sometimes during rush hour, we're not making them attractive enough. So we need to make sure that we're connecting our bus service and our train service to our ferry services. And that's why I would propose that we think of the 91st Street Marine Transfer Station as a possible ferry stop, so that we can connect our buses to the ferry and we can connect the whole city.
Well, I love the ferries, by the way. I'm a ferry girl. So I think the more of them, the better. But I also think that we should -- they should be -- we should be able to use our Metro cards to get onto the ferry. So I think you should be able to use your unlimited card, whether you're riding the train or riding the bus, or whether you want to go onto the ferry. I think if you start including -- using the Metro cards, the unlimiteds, that you're going to see a lot more people attracted to go onto the ferry system.
Mr. Kalos?
When I got elected, the East Side and Roosevelt Island were transit deserts. In the past three and a half years, we've been able to accomplish so much. We opened a Second Avenue subway. We got select bus service for the M79 and the M86. We've gotten 79 new buses for the M15, to replace buses that were literally falling apart. And I know you've been fighting, I know I've been fighting, for ferry service. And we got stops for Roosevelt Island, which will be opening this summer, 60th Street, and my opponents may not know, 90th Street, which will be starting next year. And I've been working very closely with my fellow elected officials and Assembly Member Rebecca Seiright, to have a transfer between the ferry and the subway, the tram, or the buses, so folks can get around on one fare. And I was proud to provide funding in the city budget, about $30 million, to make sure that folks could afford to ride the ferry at a swipe of just $2.75, and it needs to be a MetroCard swipe.
Okay, we're going to go to the closing statements. You'll each have one minute. I'd like to start with Mr. Boboland.
Hi, I'm Patrick Boboland. I'm running for city council in District 5. I'm running because it's clear to me that the Democratic Party needs new people with new energy and new ideas. I'm an activist and organizer. I worked on the Bernie Sanders campaign. I worked with Black Lives Matter activists on the South Side of Chicago. I was also a public school teacher there. Under the tenure of our current city council member, we've seen rampant overdevelopment of luxury housing. We've seen a lead crisis hit our public schools and go untreated. And we've seen one of our local beloved parks be handed over to wealthy real estate developers and privatized. I'm a democratic socialist, and I come from a low-income background. And I believe without people who understand the real affordability crisis through lived experience, we'll always be at the bottom of the list of priorities when we come up against lobbyists, private developers, or financial interests. I've been fighting for human rights and social justice without concessions for my whole life, and if I get your vote as city councillor on September 12, I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Goodwin?
Hi, I'm Gwen Goodwin, and I'm also an activist. But the difference, I think, here is, I have a little more time under my belt. So I've been an activist for 32 years. As long as I've been living in our neighborhood, I've been a housing activist. I saved PS 109 while it was being demolished by the School Construction Authority. And I think that's really outstanding, because I don't know too many people that could walk in to a demolition in progress and turn it around and get the school or any building redone, especially against an authority, because authorities really do have all the authorities. So I think this is one of the things, the talents that I bring to the table. And I think I am a tenant that recognizes the struggles people are going through, and I would like to get in there and turn some of these laws around, like the Tenant Anti-Harassment Bill, which is anything but. It actually gives landlords the right to harass tenants and neuter the tenants, so they can't have any lawsuits against landlords. So that's really important, to protect tenants. But I think most of all, what people can bank on is, I show up. I will stand in front of a bulldozer if you need me to. But most of all, I get the job done. I mean, when, you know, 9/11 happened, I put together a trip called "The Breath of Fresh Air." I sent away 400 firefighters, and they had free bed and breakfast. But I think you can also know that I am coming to the table as a public servant, and I'm not going to give myself a raise or ingratiate myself. I'm coming just to work. Thank you.
And Mr. Kalos?
Thank you to Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Thank you to Joyce for hosting. Thank you to the viewers for watching and participating in our democracy. I've had the privilege of representing this district for three and a half years. This is a neighborhood that welcomed my grandparents, who fled antisemitism in Europe, where I and my mother both grew up, and where I hope to raise a family and grow old with my wife. Since being endorsed by the New York Times for my fresh ideas, we've worked together and successfully won 400 new pre-K seats, $150 million for our esplanade. Commutes are better with a new subway, buses, bikes, and even a new ferry, and we have so much more that we can do together. As a reformer, I'm proud to have eliminated outside income and made the city council a full-time job. I've opened my office by allowing residents just like you to vote on $1 million and how to spend it in your community. We do First Friday each month. Please join me, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Join me for brainstorming with Ben, or I'll come to you for Ben in your building. I need your vote in the Democratic primary on September 12.
I want to thank all the candidates for participating in today's debate. The primary elections will be held on Tuesday, September 12. For more information about voting, locating your poll site, and the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, l w v n y c dot org. Please remember, only voters enrolled in a party having a primary may vote in a primary